is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Ms. Skirber, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Canelli, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. Ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Hey, we're ready to go. The purpose of this special meeting is to get an update on the 10-year enrollment projection study. We're joined tonight by the SLAM Collaborative. The Facilities Committee of the Board of Education received this presentation last month, and we thought it was important to bring it to the full board for discussion. A lot has changed in the last few years in terms of, you know, some of the activity in town. And as we move forward on our capital planning and looking at our racial imbalance plan, we thought this information was a valuable starting point to have, so we asked Mike to join us again. And with that, I will give you the floor. Thank you and welcome. Yeah, the button you need to see, when you're speaking, you need to hold down the button.
No, I think I'll be fine. Just gonna keep remembering to pushing down on this. It's gonna be a challenge. All right, everybody, good evening. It's great to be back. Trying to advance. Pushing left and right and it's not doing anything. So for tonight, we always start with a review of our past projections, and then we'll get into a discussion on the enrollment drivers, really demographics, housing, everything that's leading into school enrollment. Then we'll do an overview of the enrollment trends and get right into the projections themselves. So, starting with our projection comparison, the last time we did a full comprehensive set of enrollment projections was back in the fall of 2019. So, we're comparing the model that we used back then to the actuals of October 1st, 21, 22. And what we're seeing is that the projections that we prepared back then are running slightly higher overall than what we actually experienced for this past school year, with the middle school running at about 30 students below what we had projected, the high school running at about 40 students below what we had projected, and the overall elementary school running at just under 90 below what we had projected overall. Taking a little bit of a deeper dive into those individual grade groupings, we did see some variation from school to school, so that was part of our really deeper dive into those enrollment drivers, where we saw Stratfield running 40 below what we had projected, Burr 32, Riverfield at 31, McKinley at almost 30, and North Stratfield at almost 30 but above. Middle school at 33 overall. We were closer on Roger Ludlow, where we had our actual deviation was pretty small there, but we did have a deviation at Tomlinson of 24. So, both Woods and Ludlow had less than 10, so those performed really well, where we had Tomlinson was lagging by about two dozen students. And then with the high school, we had a deviation of just over 40 overall, with that really lying in Fairfield Ward at almost 30 students there, difference versus Ludlow, which was less than 10. So getting into the enrollment drivers, the U.S. Census was finally released. This is from the 10-year census, the 2020 fielding. It had a bit of a lag. It does not pick up anything that happened really over the course of the pandemic since, you know, the spring of 2020, a lot of demographic changes have occurred since then. We've seen it in the news. This has silenced that, but some of the new estimates coming out are accounting for that. But what we saw overall was Fairfield's total population grew by just over 2,100 residents, or 3.5% over the last decade. And now we actually have cohort-level data that I'll talk about later. For when we did birth projections, we were able to use females of childbearing age and do a demographic rather than a mathematical model for those future projections. So that was a big to-do for the enrollment projections overall compared to where we've been operating in the past, really, five or six years. Between 2010 and 2020, the median age in town increased from 38.5 to almost 41 years of age. We did see greater growth in those cohorts of 55 to 64. We saw a decline in those 35 to 44-year-olds. So really, it's sort of that last half of the boomers, and we're seeing a decline due to the smaller Gen Xers, where we are seeing some modest growth, though, is in those younger cohorts, the 20 to 34, which really represent the leading edge of that or the bulk of that millennial generation. This is a detailed analysis of females of childbearing age broken down by five-year cohorts. This really does a good job of forming the basis for where we're likely seeing births going forward. And as you could see in the stacked bar chart, from the first column on the left, looking at 2000 to 2010 change, that middle column, there was a decline of about 1.5%. From 2010 to 2020, we saw a much greater decline of about 6.5%. Within those cohorts, we did see some growth, though, but that was largely experienced in some of the younger cohorts as well as the 30 to 34-year-olds. We were able to get the 2021 birth data, and it's preliminary at the time that I had published a report about a month ago. I went back and checked, and that preliminary data is still in the same status, and the number hasn't changed. But what we're seeing overall was that we had a birth uptick in, we had a birth uptick in 2021. 2020 saw much lower births, but it was kind of following that similar cyclical nature of birth cycles. What we did to be able to project kindergarteners out the last five years of our enrollment projections was we ran three different birth projections using different demographic models, really different fertility rates for those. And what we're seeing overall is that we're looking at, we're looking at the low model averaging about 530, five years that we don't have births for, ranging from 530 to 542. The median model is slightly higher, at 572 births, but on par with what we saw for the 2021 year, ranging from 544 to 589, and that higher demographic model averaging about 590, with a range of 570 to 608 births. So these will play an important role later on because they're going to feed directly into our different models for our enrollment projections. Tracking the unemployment rate overall, no big surprises here. We saw a huge spike in 2020 due to the onset of the pandemic that has since come down. Fairfield is showing in the red or the orange color line along the bottom. It really mirrors that of the county as a whole and the state, however, at a much lower level of unemployment. But the last year in average for 2021 was just around 5%, so not yet fully recovered from where you were prior to the economic downturn of the pandemic, but still trending in the right direction. Through the Warren Group, we're able to capture housing sales. When we looked at the home sales for the last couple of years was really the update. We saw that the single-family sales for 2020 surpassed the prior peak of 2004, where there was about 1,070. We had 1,076, still counting the condos in there. It's still lagging a little bit of that pre-Great Recession peak, where housing sales combined were, you know, high 1,200s, almost on the verge of 1,300 in 2004. For 2021, though, that has dipped off slightly to just under 950 reported for single-family sales for the full year, and condo sales for 2021 were up from the recent five-year We like to perform a hotspot analysis where we begin looking at concentrations of sales. The gray-colored map in the lower left represents the hotspot that we put together back in 2019, so really pre-pandemic boom of the last two years. And the hotspot on the right reflects 2021 data. There's a lot of similarities in the patterns there of where those traditional areas are for home sales. We are seeing some consistency between there. Even though we have more sales, the geographic location of where they've been occurring through this analysis is pretty much very similar from pre-pandemic to the last year. Looking at single-family sale price, and this is really running a good swath of historic, and I'm gonna just pull up my slide here so I can see it just a little bit better. What we're seeing in the blue bar chart on the left-hand side is really your peak, which you've reached in 2021, of a single-family sale price up at a high of 690,000. That's up over 30,000 from 2020 and nearly 120,000 from 2019. Condos as well, the sales there have experienced a recent high in 2021 of 445,000. The last peak occurred just prior to the Great Recession in 2007 at 615,000. We're seeing a lot of these similar trends. I think something that has changed since we've put the pen to this report, but we've been watching is just, you know, the Fed control of the market with the interest rates, as well as a tightening of the inventory is gonna have a big bearing in the overall sale price as well as the total number of sales. So that really kind of bears watching over the next six months to a year to see how the market pans out. And the chart on the right just takes a look at, the green bar represents the most recent data for a single-family sale price versus the blue bar, which was the pre-Great Recession peak. And what we're seeing overall is many communities have fully recovered since then. Looking at the overall housing permits, averaging about 132 new units a year. When you factor in demolitions of existing homes and then rebuilds, it's a net of just over 90. Most of the large peaks here, where we're seeing these very large net gains, which are shown in that orange or pumpkin-colored line, as well as the total number of permits really correspond with when the permits get filed for some large multifamily projects. And there is a bit of a lag there from when they get approved construction and ultimately filed and show up. We reached out to Fairfield's Planning and Zoning, as well as Economic Development Department, to be able to get a list of really what we'll call a housing pipeline. So these were anything that was recently completed, under construction right now, approved, or still in the planning stages. And on the map on the right, you'll see where we've color-coded the different development based on the status of it, with green representing built, yellow representing approved, orange representing proposed. And these little dot densities represent the relative number of units in each development. So where you see the much larger circle, that's a much greater number of units. So we then went through that list, geocoded all of those housing developments that are in the pipeline, assigned those to the elementary school districts that they feed into, which then gets them into the feeder pattern up through the middle and high school to understand what those impacts are going to be from these residential developments over the next five to 10 years. We do have several large developments that are proposed for Burr, as you could see right here. The data that we had was in March. I haven't checked back to see if they've changed any status there, but nevertheless, we've built them into the projections. And then we have several developments right along 95, around the metro stations down here in the southern end of town that have been recently built, and some that are approved as well and about to enter construction. And this is just a tabular look at that data that I went through. It was at a pretty fine-grained level of detail with the different units themselves, the type of occupancy, the status, as well as where we then went ahead and did some estimates of student generation. The Town Planning and Zoning Department and Economic Development have been tracking students generated from these developments over the last several years. We went back and we took a look at the prior study in 2019, which found that about .15 students were generated per dwelling unit. The 2021 study that they did found .16. That .16 multiplier is what we used for those pipeline developments in order to add a total student generation into our enrollment projections, as I'll talk about a little bit later on. The cohort survival is predicated on the recent past being a good indicator of future, but what it doesn't pick up on are active developments, things that are popping up that we want to be sure that we're accounting for. So we're estimating about 209 public school children coming out of those, coming out of those pipeline developments. All right, getting into our enrollment analysis section. Your pre-K-12 enrollment peaked at 10,360 students back in 2012 and 13. Since then, it's declined at an average annual rate of about 1.1%. Over the last five years, enrollment for the entire system has averaged just over 9,600 students. Taking a little bit of a deeper look at that, breaking it down by the K-5 grade grouping, that five-year average is 4,063 students. The middle school is averaging 2,356 students, and the high school is averaging 3,028 students. We did see a little elementary enrollment growth over this past year, from 2020 to 21, 22, 1.8%. However, middle did decline by just under 3%, and high school declined by just under 3% as well, giving a net of minus 1%. This is a historic look back of five and 10 years of your individual elementary school enrollment. So even though we've had a pretty steady decline, we did see some slightly different trends from school to school overall. Those five-year trends are shown here in the five-year delta column, as well as the 10-year delta column going all the way back 10 years, and that's comparing it to the 21, 22. Really, kind of what jumped out to me on that was that, looking at that time period over the last five years, North Stratfield had about 4% growth. McKinley was really relatively unchanged, and we did see a larger decline over that time period at Stratfield. This is taking a historic look back at the middle school enrollment. What we can see here is that, going back to 2011 and 12, we had Roger Ludlow as the larger enrolled middle school. That changed in 2013 or so, when Fairfield Woods became the larger enrolled middle school, you know, yielding about 900 students for a good chunk of the decade, keeping that same gap there, even though the enrollment kind of fluctuated. We had that similar gap for a number of years. We did see the data converge in the last year with now Roger Ludlow at just over 807, just at 807, and Fairfield Woods at 802. We did see some pretty steady enrollment overall at Tomlinson. After the early decline, it's been right around 600 students in that 600 to 650 range overall. And I had noticed in the one I sent out, I had done the historic high school, but I didn't include it, so I added it back in today. So this is new from what was in the package, but it's work that we had done back in the spring. This is just an historic, an historic look back on the individual high school enrollment. Historically, Ludlow has been larger than, larger than Ward overall. We did have a few years right here where that gap shrunk, and the schools were pretty much right around the same enrollment overall from 2015 through 2017. In the last year, though, we saw a widening of this gap, when Ward's enrollment dropped to below 1,400 students, and Ludlow's enrollment was pretty stable. This takes a look at the net overall migration. So what we do here is we look across the, the total of the grade groupings in the elementary school on the chart on the left, the middle in the middle, and the high school on the right from year to year, to see whether those grouped-grade cohorts grow or shrink, to get a good understanding of what the individual dynamics are at those grade groupings. And what we saw for the elementary in the chart on the left was that we saw an outmigration for 2020. It was the first time that you've had a loss of elementary students in the data that I looked back at. However, that was followed by a pretty good rebound of just over 70 students in 21. It was the highest we've had since going back to around this 2017, 2018. In the middle school, we've had a little bit more variability, whereas in the elementary, it was pretty much in constant immigration from year to year. Prior to, you know, not counting the first pandemic year, we had a little bit more fluctuation there. You did have a high immigration there of 25 students in 2020. However, you follow that up with the net outmigration in 21. At the high school level, we have pretty consistent outmigration there, averaging about 50 students over the last decade. However, we've seen that shrink over the last few years. We had a year where it was pretty even at zero, and then for 21, 22, it was just minus eight. So that has been leveling off. This is now a more detailed analysis. So what we do for student immigration is, we have, through our, through our, really our enrollment management system, we're able to look at the state IDs and be able to track students from year to year, whether or not they are enrolled in Fairfield Public Schools. So when we see a student pop up that wasn't in Fairfield Public Schools in the past two years, we tag them as new-to-district students. What we saw for this past year is that new-to-district student rebounded. So this really gives us a good feel of the actual immigration into the district. So you'll see in 21, 22, we saw that enrollment rebound to 530 students, which was an uptick of about 100 students from the prior year, and getting us back to, almost to where you were in 2016, 2017. Taking a look at that new-to-district in the middle chart, focusing on the elementary schools overall, which are really that green component of that bar chart, we just exploded that out to look at the individual grades. We're still seeing a lot of that immigration coming in at the lower elementary grades, which is good, and it's really kind of stepped up from where we saw several of the years, but still not at the level of immigration we saw in 16, 17. The middle did see the same level of rebound there, a lot more new-to-district students in those lower grades in the sixth grade here. It far exceeded what we had for 2020, but on par with what some of those historic years are. And then at the high school level, still a bit subdued, we had that net outmigration we've been tracking. The last three years have been very similar, actually, not at the level that we saw really the first three years of the analysis, going back 16, 17 through, through 2018. So not as much new-to-district students coming into those high school grades. This is just pinpointing through a hotspot map of where we're seeing those new-to-district students. So as we go through and take a look at our, take a look at our analysis, we have every student's address matched and geocoded, looking for hotspots here, looking at the neighborhoods and the attended zones where we're seeing that change. I've added this chart. It wasn't in the package, but I think it does a good job of showing, comparing the overall average compared to the last few years there, but really seeing a pretty heavy clustering in McKinley, Holland Hill, Sherman, Stratfield, North Stratfield, they're in the southern area of that, to a lesser extent, you know, Mill Hill down here, as well as, as well as Riverfield. But really along the, kind of like if you were to draw a line right here where you have greater housing density, we're seeing those greater hotspots of new-to-district students. That's not to say we're not getting some new-to-district students up here in the larger lot zone areas, the northern periphery of Fairfield. We are, it's just that there's, there's not the density there to really kind of flag it that we're seeing down here. Taking a look at the overall racial composition, and it's probably, I have a little note there on bullet three, that the, the numbers weren't finalized. I believe the state probably released a report at the end of May, but we were really looking at the 21, 22 number at 27%. But what we're seeing overall is that it's becoming increasingly diverse, increased from 19% in 2010, 11, up to 27% for this past school year. We're seeing growth spread out, but really some of the largest growth occurring in the Hispanic, Latino cohorts, as well as the races. This chart looks at the elementary school, tracking the racial balance overall as the state defines it in the state racial balance law. What this does is, this is historic look back going all the way back to 2012, 2013. In each column, we have the percent minority overall, your delta, as well as the district-wide average on the bottom. And then you'll see where we do have some highlights, that's that deviation from the district-wide at, at marked increase. plan, they are below that district-wide change. So where you start to see this improvement overall, it's just the McKinley percent minority isn't keeping pace with the district-wide average. So my preliminary number in 21, 22 is at just over 29%. ... years, 30, just over 30. So there is racial imbalance category as shown in the, in the red color. There are non-public schools, and I will really add it for, for this, as well as several You have to go through a special process. So it really only, it's not truly capturing all of the other non-public schools, but taking a look back in this overall data trend, we were, we were sure to compare apples to apples. I think the key takeaway for me is when looking at the pre-K-8 enrollment, we're seeing the overall number of Fairfield resident students declining, intending those other public schools, as well as in the high school, it's declining as well. The largest is shown in red here for the pre-K-8 grades with St. Thomas Aquinas, and then Fairfield Prep in the, in the more rose-colored here, the largest. And you'll see some of the smaller schools there all listed. This is just a graphical representation of how we put together the enrollment projections. So really, this blue area is those enrollment drivers that I had spent the time on earlier going over. Our starting data really becomes those births, as well as birth projections and the historic enrollment trends that I covered on. And then we get into our projections assumptions and what's going into the projection model itself. So we rely on the cohort survival methodology. It's what we use for all of our school construction projects, as well as one of the best methodologies out there to have grade level and school-specific data. However, it does assume that the recent past is gonna be a good predictor of the near future. You have a pandemic thrown in there and, and other factors that are external. You have to begin making some modifications to that and taking some deeper dives is what we've been doing. See, when I go through a little bit of discussion on things like persistency ratios, where you get a persistency ratio of one, that means you had 100 first graders at school. You would have 100 second graders for the upcoming school year, and these ratios are affected by all of the factors that I went over and discussed. Where we did make modifications to this model is though, is the student generation from that pipeline, so those have been added in, added in at the individual school level. for about, about eight... As well as our student immigration of point. Birth model, as well as a much lower immigration of point. And all of the digits on this one, because I'm blinding myself and looking around the little camera there, but the. Found it this past year, we did see a little bit of a drop off. Traditionally, you've been right around, and I won't stream my eyes there, around one and a quarter to 1.3. We did see a dip in 2019 and 2020, however, that has rebounded. What we're seeing here, though, is that net out migration you had during that first year of the pandemic of just, just below 0.16%. That had a very modest rebound, but you've been very flat. So the total net estimate of migration's been very flat the last two years, not at the level where you were prior to the pandemic, but also leading up to the pandemic in 2018, 19, and 2019, 20, you were at point three and point four percent, so not where you were at from 2015 to 2017. So that, that has bearing, because as we project going forward, when we look at our model, the median model averaged point six, the high model averaged point nine five per year. So you can now see that, how that correlates nicely with what your historic percentage has been over the last several years, whereas, you know, the last like three years really reflects that low model or that, that pessimistic model. This is a look at what comprises your kindergarten classes. So going back to 2001, 2002, you don't see any green on top of the stacked bar charts, showing that, that back then, that's when your birth decay was right around one. So for births in the community five or six years ago, when they turned into kindergarteners, they basically came in at one to one, or you know, some slightly below, some slightly less. Then in the mid 2000s, we start to see that trend of getting some immigration. So you're now yielding more kindergarteners that, than, that were born in the community in the prior five or six years. And then that became really a consistent factor. And this is where we began modeling that variable birth decay to account for that immigration. And then we got to the current year, where you saw a much larger component of your kindergarten class was comprised of students that were not born, presumably not born in Fairfield. So this is a trend not only here, but in many of our communities that we work in throughout Connecticut. And I think it's probably if I had exposure nationally and say, you know, out west or the west, or Midwest, you would see it's probably a generational thing where many young families are, you know, having children and then moving into the, the houses that they want to be able to start entering into school age and, and raising their families in with kids in tow. So we generated three different projection models, a low, medium, and high. They're all driven by those assumptions that I went over. The high shown in blue, the medium shown in green are pretty much in agreement, where they're showing some, you know, enrollment stability overall, and then we show in the last half of it, we're showing a little bit of a slow uptick there. The low model shows that continued decline, and then it really flattens out at the end. But overall, we have a pretty tight banding here from just under 89, 100 pre-K 12 students in that low model to just over, or just under 95, 50 in that high model, with the medium model yielding 9,265 students at the, at the end there. Based on our conditions and everything we've been reviewing, we're seeing that medium model as representing the most likely direction going forward over the next, over the next decade. And this is just a more detailed look by grade groupings of those models with the bottom part of the stacked bar chart, the little blue sliver here is that. I'll peek around the camera. I think that's where we talk about the, the troughing of it right in here. And it's not even a really defined trough, it's just kind of like it flattens out and undulates a little bit from year to year. All right. So with the K five, we're seeing that it's bottomed out and it's projected to begin growing, really looking at the next five years, about six or just over 225 students, point two percent for the, over the whole 10-year cycle. Very slowly. By 2032, high school. Piece of duct tape I'll have to bring next time. Sorry about that. An overall decline there of about 320 students over the next decade, and it's really those smaller cohorts moving through the system, as well as some of that historic net out migration that I talked about earlier. I won't go through this chart, but this is just for your information, this is the, this is the by-grade district-wide projections in tabular format. We're projecting growth across all elementary schools over the next decade, except for Dwight, which we're showing a decline there of about six percent. Holland Hill is going to remain flat at about, at zero percent, and Roger Sherman's going to have a slight decline at just under two percent. Burr, Mill Hill, Osborne Hill, and North Stratfield are projected to increase by more than 10% over the next five years. And Jennings, McKinley, Riverfield, and Stratfield are projected to grow by less than 10% over that last, over the last, over the next five years. Over the last five years, we're projecting growth across all of the elementary schools just at various levels. And I wish I could tell you I had good enough eyes to give you a snippet of that, but hopefully you could see it in your printed copy there. All right. For the middle school projections, Tomlinson is projected to dip below 600 students and remain pretty stable, averaging about 577 students over the next decade. Fairfield Woods is projected to be fairly stable for the first five years, averaging just under 750 students. However, in 27, 28, we get a bubble moving through the system. It's due in part to the K bubbles we're seeing in North Stratfield and Osborne Hill, as well as some increased immigration there, where students are now pushing up and matriculating into the middle school, reaching just over 840 students there. Ludlow is projected to decline over the next five, bottoming out at 685 students, and then it recovers slowly and averages 715 students over the last half of the projection horizon. All right. For the high school, Fairfield Ward is projected to exceed 1,430 students next year, and then enter a bit of a decline, dropping down to just over 1,200 students by 26, 27, and averaging 1,220 students over the last five years of the projection horizon. Fairfield Ludlow is projected to reach 1,540 students by 23, 24, and then drop off over the next six years, reaching just over 1,300 students in 29, 30. And then they're both projected to have very modest growth over the last two years of the projection horizon. And we're assuming the alternative high school will be steady at, we took an average of 55 students there and plugged that in for our projections. So our general takeaways are all three models yield pretty, pretty tight banding compared to a lot of the projections that we do. So even though we made changes in the assumptions on the level of net immigration, as well as what those future births look like, for a school system of your size, we, we have a pretty tight banding in our range there from 8,900 to about 9,600. Both the medium and high have similar trajectories, but they do have a, a spread of about 300 students at the endpoint in 2031, 32. We're recommending especially for long-term facility planning, that, that medium model. Elementary enrollment is projected to see that greatest growth of just over 360 students or 9.2%. And middle and high are both projected to decline and bottom out over the next decade. And last but not least, we're basically keep watching the market, keep watching those enrollment drivers, I think, should, you know, the housing market continue where it's at, sands the, sands the rate change and, and the tightness of the inventory, then the high model may prove to be a little more accurate, especially in those last few years. However, from what we're seeing, we're thinking that a lot of the communities, especially from the year-to-date data that we're looking at housing sales, there's just not much inventory and that some of the, the fringe buyers, they're going to be really impacted by the, by the rate increase. With that, I'll, I'll put it over to the board for any questions and give my hand a
Mr. Peterson?
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the, the level of detail. I'm trying to, I have many questions, but I was trying to consolidate them into, into just a few, and really a large number of my questions come down to the macroeconomic environment, which you talk about in terms of, of the housing market. Obviously, we're seeing, you know, as you say, high rates, low inventory, high prices, constraining especially first-time buyers. But we're also in a situation where we have high inflation. And the combination of these factors, I wonder, I wonder if you've done any analysis about how like a high inflation environment may impact things like private school enrollment versus public school enrollment, or decision about when to have additional children for families? Is, is any of that kind of baked in here at any, any level? You see what I'm getting at. I mean, we're, we're in a very kind of dynamic economic backdrop right now, and I can see a lot of drivers moving things in a variety of ways.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be enough reliable data to override sort of that standard methodology that we go through on that, but it's something that we're thinking about and, and watching. I think one of the big factors, especially when we begin looking at, you know, the parental choice of, of are you going to opt for a private school or not? It's been pretty steady over the last 10 years of data that we looked at, that that, that has been on, on the decline pretty much following the overall enrollment. So I think the percentage of students overall that are opting out of Fairfield Schools and seeking another avenue, whether it's parochial, private school, has been pretty steady overall if I were to look at a percentage of that. But I don't, I can't speculate going forward of, you know, what the economics of that are going to drive a parent to opt out of Fairfield or not and choose a different, choose a different course of action.
From the, from the private school standpoint, is that a trend that you're seeing in other communities? Or is that, is that Fairfield's trend?
It's, that's Fairfield's trend, is what I'm reporting on.
Right.
I haven't done it on every community, like just the ones that we've, you know, worked in. But what we've been seeing overall is that, that percentage has been pretty much locked in. When we went through the Great Recession, we saw a large decline in private school enrollment and an uptick in public school enrollment, but it didn't offset the massive shifts of employment and housing that we saw that led to a, a big decline. We didn't see that as part of the pandemic.
And I guess a tangential point to that, when you talk about, I was interested to see the high school outmigration. That doesn't, that does not include people matriculating at private schools. That's loss of high school student resident in town.
That's loss of Fairfield Public School students, not high school resident students. So what that looks at is the student body about to enter high school. So we're looking at grades eight through 11 in the prior year versus nine through 12 in the current year. So that accounts for parental and student choice moving from eighth into ninth grade. So looking at that cohort, does it move up one to one, or does it not? But it's only looking at the Fairfield Public School students. It's not looking at other public schools that are Fairfield residents or parochial private school students that are Fairfield residents. It's only the public school student body.
Saying just high schools lose students. I, I'm just trying to see whether it extrapolates to people tend to move out of town when their kids reach high school. And it sounds like you can't make that, that assumption.
Without having some sort of survey census of why, what's happening, I think there's probably various reasons. I, I would probably say the least of those is moving out of town when you get into high school. It's probably opting into a different program versus a true residency shift.
All right. And just.
May I ask a quick follow-up to that? But isn't that information that the district would know, because we would know where we sent the transcripts?
Yes, we can, the schools account for essentially where those eighth and ninth graders go, if they go to Prep or to another private school, or even to some of the magnet programs.
Also, good point. So that might be something for the, the facilities committee, they may want to bear down on that information, because if, if there was just a recent blip, for example, of increased students getting a transcript request changed to private schools within Fairfield, but to Mr. Peterson's point, there's still residents here in Fairfield, you know, again, I just think that, that would be interesting to notice which of those two trends the data supported.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think my fundamental question is, is there a population of kids who are going to, you know, that we are not really accounting for, who are going to start coming into the public high school? So, which I guess we'll just have to see from a year-to-year basis. I'm, I'm not going to monopolize things, I just want to ask one more question about the, the pre-K enrollment assumption you make, said it will average 177 students over the next decade. Why did you pick that? And, and that's, that's a number that has been getting larger in recent years.
I take the recent average and I just carry that forward. I don't do a, a demographic model to project the number of pre-K students. It's if you're planning to offer more seats, we would adjust that number upwards. So if you were planning to go to say a true universal pre-K, it would basically reflect something similar to your K, but one year earlier. So it's really a function of the size of your program, I just want to account for that number.
That's fine. And a last question while I'm thinking about it, these numbers do not include open choice students. Is that correct?
Open.
So we, we have 100 students from other towns who.
Those are included in the enrollment of Fairfield Public Schools, those are accounted for in the enrollment, I believe. If I were to go back and actually disaggregate it by residency, I believe we have students that are coded outside of Fairfield included in that enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Actually, I know we do. Because when I.
Ms. Jacobson?
I have a follow-up to that, and so I'll just start with that question. Can you just verify that all of this is based on address and not where they may be attending? So in other words, this is not programmatic or current enrollment outside of a zone? So students who are attending a school that's not their actual home school, they were actually put back in their home school for this? This is a map-based enrollment, not enrollment-based?
This is based on where the students are registered in that facility.
Okay. So it's not map-based? Okay, that's.
Yeah, it's not. I did map-based analysis, you know, to tie the, the housing and other information back to it, but all of the data we're seeing for the individual schools are where the students were registered on October 1st of last, of 21.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much, because that's a piggyback to open choice, and it's based on programmatic. So that's very helpful to know. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, sorry guys, on 15. The major residential development pieces, the second bullet point, can you provide a little more color about the term added to the base projections and phased in over the next seven years? Is that to account for building time, construction time, or what did you mean by that phased in over the next seven years?
Sorry. They don't all come at once, so.
Right.
For projects that are under construction, they may be done in numerous phases. I had a phone call with the town planning department to get an understanding of where they're at in the construction process, where they're at in the approval process, get an understanding of what they believe the, the timeline is. And, and it becomes a bit tricky, because construction's very tricky now with just supply chain issues. So I was pretty conservative in spreading that out, and, and even typically when you do a traditional development, you would build it building by building or part by part, and then certificates of occupancy get issued, and then eventually some students show up. So, you know, there's a natural phasing to it.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm, that's what it was, the construction. In terms of where you placed the additional students, did you use a look back in order to determine a ratio? So in terms of numbers of students that you would be putting in the elementary, elementary, middle, or high school level? So do you understand what I'm saying by that question? So you're presuming 200 students from these new developments, how did you know how many to put in elementary, middle, or high? middle, or high?
What I did was I address matched and located on the map here. It's really in our geographic information system of where those developments are, the number of units, the number of students that we see being generated based on that .16 student per dwelling unit, and then tie those into your existing elementary schools, middle school, high school boundaries.
No, I understand. But the point being, you assumed that they were all starting in elementary school. So if they're going into a BUR development...
No, I didn't. I have, using the Rutgers multipliers, we have a division of the students. So typically, most of them at the greatest number are at the elementary level. But for simplicity, I'm just tying it back to that elementary level on this map here. But I...
It is stratified. In other words, you did stratify it in some way.
It's stratified by grade grouping to get to the total yield.
Thank you. That's all I need to know for right now. And this list that you have, what is the date? This is current as of March 2022? Is that the citation here, this list?
Yeah.
So it was updated?
Yep.
Okay. Let me just see. I had a similar question to Mr. Peterson on the non-private. I assume, did you presume a continued decline and then feeder into the public? So we have the non-public trending down, right?
Yes, the non-public has been trending down.
And then so you picked that back up into the public. You continued that trend forward into these projections, yes? In other words, you're projecting for the non-public to continue to decline?
I didn't do any projections for the non-public.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
No. I don't know whether those schools are going to even exist in the next 10 years.
Okay. There's no way for you to check. Okay, understood. So that doesn't factor in here. Page 22. Just want to make sure I understand in migration analysis. I know you have hotspots. That's hotspots for development, not necessarily hotspots for actual student enrollment. So there may be a ton of building going on somewhere, but it doesn't mean it's yielding any students, and the reverse could be true.
The map on slide...
22.
23.
Is it 23? No, 22.
Yes, I put an extra slide in mind.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. So is this the...
Yeah, that one. So...
This is new-to-district students. So we identified students that weren't in Fairfield public schools before, so truly new students, geocoded them, and then did a hotspot analysis. So what this shows is the location of where those new-to-district students are showing up in this table here represents the tabulation of those by elementary school.
Do we have that chart?
No, when I was preparing, I realized I did this table for my own analysis, and I never put it in there. And I thought you might like to see it. So I added it into the version for tonight, and I could send it back out tomorrow so you have it. Because it does a good job of comparing what the average was to the last several years. You could see where you have some of those deviations. You could see the actual numbers, too.
Okay, Christine, or Mrs. Vitale, sorry. Can we get that chart? Just because it seems a little bit different than what we received earlier in the year. So...
It is. I'll send it out tomorrow. I added it into the slide deck for today.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm just going to have one more question, guys. I went back to the 2017, 2018 presentation, just for, which is about four and a half years ago, which would be technically almost halfway through that enrollment projection. And you probably did that as well, I'm sure, like just looking backwards and different projections that you've done for us. I was just wondering if you had any rationale or reasoning for why there was such a large drop at Riverfield and Sherman from the 2017-18, which is about 15% less at both of those schools than what was projected for this year? So for this year...
So in 2017, what I projected for Riverfield...
And Sherman.
I'd have to go back in and look at...
What happened there, or just... Okay. That's something that in the future I might be interested in understanding a little bit more of. And that's it. Thank you for today.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
Thank you. On for slide 15, the, again, residents attending other non-public schools. I just feel the need to point out, and I don't know what the, and if you said it, I apologize that I didn't hear, why we don't have the data for the 2020-21 and the 21-22 school years. However, I think those would be really telling because lots of buzz around many students, many families opting for non-public schools due to a variety of things related to COVID. And so I would be very curious if that proved to be true, because then there might be an expectation that some of that migration might come back, just in terms of, because that also might then explain why some of the numbers you projected, the actual enrollment has proven to be lower. And if it turns out that, no, this enrollment kept going down, then that would debunk that theory. But just in terms of the volatility of the numbers, I think that would be really helpful. And again, I put that to the Facilities Committee, possibly to, when that data is available, to find that out. Unless you can tell me that, no, that really isn't valid.
I have 2020. I get all my data from the state, which goes through this extensive auditing process. So I know that I'm comparing apples to apples from year to year. And based on the 2020 October number, we're seeing that elementary or the pre-K 8 has been flat in two years, but down about 90 students from where it was back in 2015. Looking at the high school enrollment, the same what we're seeing there for 2020. I don't have 21, 22. It's not published yet or not available yet. But what we're seeing there is then that number dropped off pretty significantly even in 2020 from 2019 for high school. So that universe of other non-public school students has dropped off by about 50 students from 19 to 20. So I don't see that number as being a number that's increasing, where you're seeing an increasing percentage of Fairfield students attending non-public schools, unless it was a turnabout in 21, 22 that broke this longer-term trend.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't have the data.
Right. Yeah, because I guess I can, I see your point for the high school. On the other hand, I look at the elementary school, and I see that the 2020 as arresting what was a downward trend, and the possibility that that flatlining might have been what would have continued as a downward trend due to COVID. People opted for that, and that those, again, it's just food for thought. But thank you. So then just a couple of other questions. Overall, why do you, what does your analysis reveal in terms of why the projections were off to the extent that they were that you presented at the beginning of the presentation?
Sorry, let me go back to that slide to be able to speak to it. I mean, out of 9,500 students, we were off by about 2%. I've benchmarked my projections for about 16 years, and typically it will be less than 1% per year. So it's kind of within that. I don't know why it was at that level to know what each driver was for it. Pandemic, some just abrupt changes, just natural churn. I know we've seen an abrupt change to what we talk about in enrollment drivers. So housing sales have been up, but we're not yielding students. I think one of the things that we talk about in the office, but we don't have the data for yet, is that we're seeing a lot of communities out there throughout Connecticut, a lot of younger families that may be the leading edge of where we're seeing a student enter the system, but there's a lot of younger students about to enter the system, some younger children there. But I can't give a specific reason on why each of these numbers is, was off by 200 students out of 9,500.
If I could ask a kind of thematic follow-up. We've seen a lot of these enrollment projections over the years. One trend, I mean, a little bit of a devil's advocate asking this question. One trend that I've seen is that the trough in population in each successive report seems to move a few years out in the future and a few hundred kids lower. That is, we never seem to, at least in my recent recollection, we never seem to have one of these things that undershoots the population estimate. And I know you have a high, medium, and low. But over the last several years, obviously Connecticut has been kind of in the news for, we lose population, talk about people fleeing, moving out of the state, and that U-Haul rentals. Is there a trend that you see very broadly where that's the case that might apply to our situation here in Fairfield? It's a huge question.
Yeah, and many Durg A. and Durg B. districts have had enrollment turnabouts. So their enrollment has turned around. They're growing enrollment at the elementary, and it's always at the elementary. That's always the leading edge. The data we had leading up to the pandemic, where you recall, I talked about the lack of immigration in 2020, subdued numbers in 21. You were adding students before that, and you were just kind of bucking that, or staving off that enrollment decline in spite of having declining births. You were adding students through immigration. If the pandemic didn't happen, would those projections have been much closer to reality? Probably. But now, when we look at it and we say, the difference of 188 students spread across 13 grades and the number of buildings that we have and the number of classrooms, I don't know, what do we have? 450 total classrooms if we looked at homeroom classrooms across the district? Does the delta of 188 students on the projection account for a slim fraction of class size there? So when I look at it as a demographer, I take a step back and I look at the bigger picture. And I'm not trying to. And if I ever did hit it, get the absolute number two or three years later, I immediately go out and go all in on Powerball, or go up to the casino for a good bender or something. But we're trying to track a trend, and we're trying to get to that level. So when I see 188, I feel like that was pretty good considering what has happened in the last year or two. But I understand your point of saying, well, when does that trough hit? I feel like if we didn't have the impacts that we had, especially at the lower elementary, that K first grade, right? That K to first grade was big these last two years. Either parents opted for private K and then students showed up at first grade, or various, various extenuating circumstances. I bet that that rebound would have happened in 2020, 21 like we were projecting. Because in some other communities where we've been projecting it and we've been tracking it, that's exactly what had happened. And it was kind of funny, when we put them all together and looked at them, everybody had a slightly different response to the pandemic. And what it came down to was really that 2020 number was how you opened the school year.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And I just had one last question. First, I feel the need to say that when I was asking you why the projections were wrong, I wasn't trying to imply that I thought these were bad projections. I completely get the notion that hitting it on the head isn't going to happen, but it just seemed like the question that needed to be asked. So I feel the need to say that. And the only other question I had is that what would you anticipate would cause the low model to become the reality?
All right. I'll need a little prop for this one. So the low model, and hopefully I don't blind everybody clicking so quickly. All right. So the low model, we were assuming .25% on immigration. The only point in time that you had .25% on an estimate of immigration was really, if you averaged the pandemic plus 18, 19, 20, you may have been around that number. When you go back historically, even though you've had some ups and downs, and there's always ups and downs, right? So from year to year, I'm always going to be wrong because there's natural fluctuations. It would have to be really extenuating circumstances for that number to come to fruition. So much lower births than you even reported this past year. Everything that drives enrollment is going to have to go completely stagnant. And a lot of what's already happened during the increase in sales during the pandemic is a lot of young families moved to many towns in Connecticut. They would have to really kind of have a flight of those families back out, which I see very, very unlikely. It would take a perfect storm, and I hate that word, but it would take like a perfect storm of the wrong things to happen to get in that direction.
Ms. Kelly?
This is a question, I don't know if it's more for facilities or in general, but I know that when we originally wanted to get these new projections, we were saying so much had changed because of the pandemic. We wanted to make sure we had updated numbers. And I just, are we comfortable? Like, I feel like the questions that we're asking about, like the migration to public schools, like to private schools, I don't know if we're seeing what we thought would be reflected in here. So like, are we comfortable with this data saying, like, okay, this is the most updated to make the decisions that we need to make? Like, I feel like, are we good with that? So again, sorry, not really a question for you, but just in general, now that we have it, do we feel like that we're missing a chunk of the important, like, we kept saying, so much changed since the pandemic, so much changed. And are we confident that that change is reflected in here, or is it too soon to capture? Maybe that is a question for you. Are we confident that that trend is captured in here, or is it too soon because we don't have enough recent data?
I don't have the, you know, I don't have the math behind it, but from doing projections for 20 years and the last few years throughout the state of Connecticut and some communities up and down the East Coast, I feel like all the activity and all the demographic shifts that have happened, and I tell this to all my clients, the impacts haven't been felt yet in the schools. Truly, the impacts haven't been felt in the schools. When you read different real estate reports throughout Connecticut, and they're everywhere, you'll see that it's been largely a lot of, you know, I mean, we have our typical relocation for work, career change. But there was a pent-up market where a lot of individuals that were aging in place, prices got to where they needed to be to be able to sell homes. And presumably, those single-family homes in a lot of those communities went to young families. It just bears watching of when those young families will start to have children and those school-aged children, and even if they're in tow, will start showing up in the school system. But that hasn't changed that natural pattern that has been in place for probably, God, since the baby boomer generation of being able to settle down, you buy the house, you have the family, whatever order the family starts and the house starts. Presumably, a lot of the folks that are buying the single-family homes in communities are going to eventually be contributors into the school system. And I don't, and without having a census of every single person that comes into town, you don't have the real numbers behind it, but it's just your gut tells you that a lot of the enrollment changes are going to have a longer-lasting impact, regardless of what the current state of the housing market is with the tight market, you know, an increase in the rates, the longer-term impact. When you look at the number of sales is going to be really kind of, you know, bare itself in the next couple of years.
I don't really have anything to add. I mean, in terms of my own personal opinion on this, I think that we'll have to keep an eye, we have this, I think we'll have to keep an eye on what our enrollment looks like in terms of the next year or two. We track in the district, you know, the number of students that are leaving the district to go to private school. Mr. Asa?
From a Facilities Committee standpoint, I think it's safe to say that this is the initial piece of data that we needed to springboard us into the talks that we need to have as a full board. I think there are some things that jump out here. You know, when I look at the 10 years out, and I look at a school like McKinley having more students projected than we actually have seats for, and, you know, other schools being consistently lower than the number of seats we have, I think these are all going to play into the discussions we have to have. So I am, from a Facility standpoint, comfortable saying that I think our next steps here are a special full-board workshop-type meeting to take the next steps and have those discussions.
Any last questions? Thank you, Mr. Asa. Okay, seeing none. If anybody has any further questions, follow-up after this, just forward them to me, and I will get them to Mike for a follow-up. Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate...
Have a good evening.
...you taking the time. Thank you. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Mr. Peterson. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor? Motion carries. Does anyone need a quick break before we start?